Wanna see sands under tail? Oh, there's a finger here. You could barely see it, a patch of sunlight that shouldn't be here. It's real different in your hand. You knew what it was. Interesting. Oh my gosh, it's sand. So, uh, should we go into the store? Sorry kid, check the sign. Open. Yeah, we checked the sign, it says open. Oh man, thanks for checking that, that's wrong. To change your stupid sign. Alright, I'm on it. One changed sign coming up. Open. I don't see you changing your sign. Got it, come back in a bit. Knock, knock, knock. Here are narrow bones, no rattle, no trussel, nor xylophone tickle. A pyrrus is not here. Hey, human, doesn't monsters sc- doesn't monsters scare you? Like, if that girl bit you? Hidey you? Nah, Chris got nothing to worry about. I like to eat little rabbits. Mom? Hello? This... Chris, I, um, you know that daisy sa- daily saucer of milk I put out? I have, I have regrets. What are you doing? Oh, it's easy. OMG Chrissy, do you like once my free milk? That's my free milk, you furry freak. Don't drag me into this, I'm just looking at milk. What's that fucking noise I'm hearing? Who's doing shit over here? Little buddy, my date's about to start and it's in the bag. Ten dollar flowers, heart shaped pizzas, and my secret weapon. The old duct tape suit I made for prom. Little buddy, it's a, it's a first date, you say. I'm overdoing it, you say. But Pizza Rina, I wanna show her I'm serious, that I, I love her. And she may be a little late to our date, but I mean, look at these memes, a frog riding a bicycle? If she's breaking out the vintage like this, she's gotta be making that with me in her mind, little buddy. Whoops, another new text, sorry little buddy, talk later. I see Pizza's Ria's clothes for a new signage. Do you have a shirt, hon? That's nostalgic, let me guess, the usual special will be five dollar. Alrighty then, hon, you two say whatever you like. The diner, huh? Haven't been here ever since your mom took me. And her plowing into my food with a runny nose. Uncle became every gender's enemy after that. But, it's funny. You know, I was only making a mess, her face looked so happy. Just sitting there, smiling, watching me. Kind of like you're doing now. Jeez, Chris, anyone tell me your family is goddamn weird? Here you go, and here's a little something extra for your friend. Huh? Anything else, just holla. Alright, Chris, don't hold anything back. Phew. Want the last bite of my sundae? Too slow, haha. So I guess we should get going, huh? What are you doing, bringing on the window? Is that me? Ha, not bad, you know? Here, let me draw something. It's you. What'd you think? That's because I'm drawing from life, dumbass. Look, I made you talk. Suzie rules. What are you? I wouldn't say that. And then the rain fell down and... Washed everything away. Heh. Huh? Are you writing something? Ha, Chris, I can never tell you when you're messing around. Well, let's get over here. You mind cleaning up your place a bit first, hon? Uh, um, oh yeah, sure. Alright, let's go. What was that? You want seconds? Well, the cut was always right, but I'm sure your mother would be mad if you ate so much without her.
I just died to a scav! What the fuck? What the fuck?
Guys, I'm starting to think you died to a scav. Hands. Hey, don't mind me, just fixing up this grill. Want a hot dog? Heck yeah, wait, isn't that a cat tail? It's a good grill, now in addition to cat food, it can also smell like dog food. Door open. So we can go in yet? Hmm, what does the sign say? Says, "Flow open." What the hell's that mean? Beats me, I just work here. We'll change it again. Alright, you're the boss. The heck does that sign mean? Hmm, seems to be some kind of sands. So what does this say? The door's open or closed? Guess it just means that there's a skeleton in front of a door. The door is locked, right? It's closed. Locked? Nah, it's been unlocked this whole time. So it's open. Nah, no one's in there, but it's not closed. It's in between state like, hmm, like cloven. Kinda makes you wish we had a sign for that. Chris, we're done with this guy. Okay. Alright, we made it. Now, where's the hell, where the hell is Noel? Damn, I'm getting bored. Chris, got any snacks? Flower? That works, I guess. Suzie, Chris, hi. Sorry I'm late, I just had to... Yeah. And is that a, a rose? Yes, oh yeah, sorry. Oh shoot, did you want some? I could pick up the stem if you want. No, it's fine, this way. Okay, whatever. Okay, I wasn't have to wait. Fucking TVs. You could feel pressure gradient from the absence of entertainment. There you two are, I hope you've been... Where are your church clothes? Uh, you know, we just kinda... Chris Suzie... Chris Suzie's the guest, making a excuse for her. Chris, be better for it than Suzie. Well, I'm leaving for choir practice in a little while. Be anything, just come by the church, okay, honey? Apple smelling kid and their, their pizza stink brother. That reminds me when I flushed on a bath bomb and... Chris, you did that too? What, you did at home, dumbass, don't do that, do that at school. The same clue seems lighter than normal. Hey, still no heart, Evans, I drank that. Interesting, oh what is this? Is a five dollar in your brother's jar taken? Apparently I borrowed five dollars. Like, if you didn't take it, you didn't need it, right? Uh, don't know why there's a save before here for that five dollar, but, uh... Blue jar. Why the hell does your brother have all the prizes? Wait a sec. There you go, Suzie Price, for having me over your house. Hey, didn't know you own a bird or something. Huh, what the hell is this computer wallpaper? What age did you and your brother draw this at? Glad we didn't go to this cyber world, huh, what the hell? It's hard to put into words, but for some reason seeing Suzie next to you, you felt like whatever you were just right now, but it might be okay. She's staring into the mirror with a tube in it. What was I thinking? Nothing. Door's locked. Here in the drawer that contains how to draw dragons. Whoa, what the heck is? Shut the drawer as fast as humanly possible. It's a cactus, it loves you, but mainly showing its sharp side. Only there was a word for that kind of personality. There was no time to read random unimportant texts. Okay Toby. There was many photos on the refrigerator. What are you, those little horns you're wearing? Almost like you were trying to... Heh. How, why did you Photoshop Rouse to be... Wait, that's your brother? Yeah, now that I look at it, he looks, uh, different. Said I get it, you can stop pointing out the differences. I'll plug in the fridge freezer freak. Think your mom lined up with street racing her van? Well, maybe you should, maybe your tires need some air first, heh. Yo, what's up? How long did you type? I did not see your message. Dude, I've been, I've been reading so much lines of text, I did not look at any chat. 217, that was holy shit, that was fucking minutes ago, that was forever ago, my bad, I did not mean to miss your message. That's good. Hello people? Some kind of scratching noise coming from inside. Hear hissing sound, investigate further? Sure. According to that dark, it appears that the yellow circles on the circ- on the noodles are just fresh stones. The hissing was the friar. See. Ah, whatever I'm to do, this boredom is new. You must have the wrong house, I run along and play darling. For to give your TV. What, you wanna give me your TV? I don't understand, is there some kind of catch? Uh, it's scuffed up, scuffed old and the colors are kinda messed up. But it's, uh, really good, it's really good, it's really a TV. I see, could you bring it on by? Uh, wait, it's, oh, wait, hold on. Oh my, it's a handsome little thing, isn't it? What's the brand? I don't know, but his name is Tena. Your TV has a name? No, I mean, uh, yeah, it's just like a nickname. Like a Tena? How cute, I'll take it. Really? Hell yeah, Chris, we found him at home. Uh-huh, oh my, you two really love this TV, don't you? Well, don't worry, I have this strange friendly Mr. Tena, I're gonna get along famously. Oh my gosh, Middleton? Cool, well, I'm putting it in your ha- house now. Tena, your cat, what is this, Scottish beauty video? Oh my, I think something just awakened within me. As for guys, it's shame, he lost everything after he, you know... Wants to sell flowers to make ends meet, but, what, he's your father? Sorry. Alright Chris, I, you handle the driving, I'll, I'll be the turret. You know, I'll be standing in back, throwing dirt and stuff. So where's Tena now? Go back to the castle town? Which is, which is not here, I think. No, it's not. Alright, time for curiosity to win the game. He's gone. There was Tena. We might not see for a very long time. Oh shit, I didn't realize Lancer was with us. Alright. I think I've seen mostly a lot of stuff so far that I found interesting. Maybe some stuff I'm missing that I don't really, probably don't care about that much. So, save, I guess. And head on over to Noel's home. Progression time. Here's my house, I'm sorry, it's not much, but... Yeah, it's not much, you're right about that. The hell, it's huge. I mean, lost just by standing here. Oh really? Then, um, here, I'll show you around. Noel joined your study group. Interesting. They're coming with us. Chris, please don't use this for me. Nevermind. Welcome to my ho ho home. Chris, let's start searching. Um, okay. Let's me have the couch when you're done searching? Start the study session? No. That was a... Interesting, what is this, a bathroom? That was backdoor, no one to leave. Uh-huh, what the heck is this? My mom collects these. Okay, how the hell do you turn it off? Um, just hold down the button. Though, for some weird reason, turning it off takes power? So it takes forever to on low battery ones, haha. Why is there so much bobbled water in here? Um, it's just convenient, you know? Wait, till she learns about the three... From this sink? This is a room? Same as that, under it is a metal CD with a photo of Noel in dark made up makeup. Whoa, what the hell is this? Um, Caddy wanted a custom cover for her mix CD, so... It's cool, you should, uh, do this look more. Uh-huh, if you can get my mom to let me go rimdark. She's not looking, Chris, let's hack her computer for clues. Favorite history? Alright, Chris, it's a quiet, we're ninjas right now. Okay. Favorite paranormal crime, paranormal? Oh hell, the freaking skateboard game, hell yeah, woo! What are you two doing? Um, shit, nothing, upgrade your computer? Instead of browser homepage to the skateboard game? Alright, cat pizza, petter, pettersy? The hell do you have this? Um, excuse me, it's great, it's like a pet raising game, but there's this, um, awesome bug that lets you get going... That you, wait, there's this, um, awesome bug that lets you get glitchy pets. But safe eye with like seven headless cats. Whoa, wait, can I, can we see? Great hiding place, although it smells like detergent and deer. What are these little, uh, what was it? Um, oh, uh, those, I had those since I was little. They're from when I was the angels in the holiday packet. I liked them so much, I just kept wearing them. It's this, it's the state of the art high definition TV with old game consoles under. Why do you have a flat screen in here? Oh, um, yeah, early Kip's, hey, I should get a CRT, haha. It's a couch for watching the TV. It's a big ass couch. What's in here? Hey, what's in here, looks suspicious. I'm sorry, guess I ran out of there. Cool, sounds, uh, suspicious. My mom just collects heart pillows for some reason. When Chris was little, they would take one of these. They pretend to rip out their heart and chase me. Hey Chris. Yep. It's locked alright, well, you give it a shot. I'm okay, oh, why are we trying to put, we're trying to open my parents' room? Chris is staring super intense, this room's gotta be it. Sorry no, but we gotta go in here. To the bathroom? Damn it, Chris. Is this the kitchen? Or is this a safe room? Oh shit. No one's gonna say anything about the giant sword? Oh, it's just my mom's katana. Normal knives aren't enough for dad's fruitcake, uh-huh. Piano? Whoa, you play piano? Uh, no, we just kind of have one, haha. Highly plantable looking tree. The fridge is packed with festival goods, a jar of pickles. Ooh. Fire. It's down here. No, I'm assuming? Prisons. It's an empty gift box. It's an empty gift box, there's a vent here, I can go, these little sus, it's an empty gift box. Um, Chris, you need to check, please, I mean, kinda made this room is kinda sus, especially that vent. Uh-huh, nice reference Suzie. No way. No, ooh, no way, dude. Off reference, I'll stop talking now. We got Among Us. Among Us reference, Toby Fox, the Among Us reference. Thermostat, all options cold. Alright, um, let's go to the kitchen, save, and start the study, study session. Among the sauce. Okay, should we, um, get started? Oh, um, yeah, sure. Where's Rice? Um, so what are you focused about? Oh, well, um... Sorry, um, phone call, I'll be just a sec. Hi Birdly, what's up? Um, uh, sure, um, of course I'm alone. Um, sure, I bet I do look quite... Surprised this fine evening. It's about the notes, I already highlighted them for you, so... What? Want me to run a date to the festival with you? Um, I mean, sure, I, I'd be glad to. You're player two? She's not going to the festival with you dumbass? Suzie, look, you don't really wanna go with him, right? Some people aren't going to get it until you scream no. Did you forget that, or, did you forget that or something? Yeah, you're right. I shouldn't be afraid to tell Birdly how I really feel. Next time I, I should be honest, next time, I should... Shook his neck or scream at him. So, um, haha, where did you throw my phone anyways? Chris, I'll keep you busy, you go look for clues. Noel's phone. Can you still hear a voice on the other end? Answer it? Can you still hear Birdly just like talking to himself? Oh, sweet rosary Santa, the nightmare is becoming real, Suzie. Reenewal is just to stop me from going with her. She's, she's gone, yelling here for me. Oh heavens, t' yikes, where's my Dragon Blazer barf bag? But now that I think about it, she must be buried lonely. Poor girl with no one to show her exclusive tips and tricks. Hello, are you still there? Listen, it disgusts me to say this, but... As an act of charity, I will give, I will let you be the breeze under my wings. You, me, festival. Birdly? Sure. Seen the wrong number song? Chris, you, you the fu- you... Chris, I have to say, heh, I am flattered. If you blow my hand, you'll have to fight for it. On the day of the festival, you Noel Suzie. The lovers who impressed me the most will be my date. Chris, may the best suitor epic win. Good luck. Epic win. Sus here? Pushing my phone review as a kid. This is, uh, Rudy's room, I think? It's a computer, modernism. It's a CD player, underneath are tons of punk rock CDs and, hmm, one still sealed... Sealed scuff CD. Don't know how to say that. It's a box of odds and ends, dig through? Sure. You dug through the box and found a couple of burnt lighters. Rusty, uh, multi-tool knives, expired rations, walkie-talkies, loose binoculars, a pair of shoes fit for hoofs. Violent comic books, paintballs, a cracked hockey mask, frilled yarn and buttons. Your brother retain, your brother's retainer, and old mint cans with unique leaves inside of them. It's a red guitar. It's a code taped to the inside, it says shelter. You leaned down and looked inside the guitar. You began to read the numbers in the passcode. One, two... Two... Okay, bye Chris. Talk to you later, I guess. No, we can, we can get the fuck out of here. Oh, this is a puzzle. Uh, let's see, let's gooo. I'm preventing, we're being sus. Uh, I don't think the heart monitor's working at all. Seen it like stay at 88 forever now, we'll just do that. Interesting.
You're gonna die, please, about to turn dating. Yeah, cuz it's daytime. Hey, I'm actually faster than the jet. Just don't touch him.
Okay, we'll, we'll get back to that in a bit.
Oh no, we're just seeing another guy, we're shooting them down. Thank you Lincoln, Lincoln, come on, bro, lock in. Yeah, Lincoln. Not mad at Lincoln, I'm, I'm, I'm there, bro, I'm mad at him.
Very interesting, I don't know, I don't know where to go, I don't know what to talk about. A little bit flabbergasted right now. Mike Chris. Dark, Valentin, X.
Yes.
Suzie must not get guitar. Need soul. Without soul, Chris will... Suzie, guitar, code, stop. Police, sacrifice, next week. Church, tonight. Chris, dark world, no soul, can't.
How like in here too?
Oh shit.
Isn't that nighttime or some shit? Ah, is that nighttime, boys, come on? No, it has to be nighttime, fuck me. Can't say that.
Uh-oh.
I would love to see that.
So, oh, dude, the lights, oh man, I didn't know. The light, the power grow? Ah, Chris, what else you doing with your stupid pranks? Let's go fix the breaker. Oh man, I didn't hear conversations, I'm a, I'm a stupid. Oops, the tree. I'm sorry, dad didn't clean the basement this year. Or is the breaker down, downs here somewhere? I go towards Suzie? You know what really makes me afraid of basements? Like, the underground level from Dragon Blazers? It just repeats over and over again. Hell yeah, that was weird. You played it? Yeah, uh, only two as a bit. Got it from the lost and found. Even though it wasn't mine, haha. Suzie, haha. Played it as secret style, so I wouldn't get in trouble. Oh my gosh, same, I played two of my dad, but like, there was like this evil route my parents didn't move out of. Always played it in secret, so they wouldn't take it away. Dude, I think I did that by accident. But, huh, that you were by accident? Yeah, I like, I didn't know you could be nice. So I'm just killing everything and getting like pissed. Why the hell is everyone mad? Pretty sure I do the good way now, though. Maybe? Gosh, I'd love to see you play for real. Well, if you got another copy. Just leaving the lost and found, I guess. But maybe I will. Oh my gosh, this just brushed against my leg. What the hell is that? It's, it's an angel doll. It was goddamn moving. Oh my gosh, am I gonna fucking die? Okay, ready to kill, I got a K and U. Really, you're definitely a cookie pan? No, I just, I'm going to. Huh, dude, you got guts. Probably just like a mouse underneath it, right? It's nothing to be afraid of. Alright.
Appreciate it. I suppose it's called gills?
Dude, wait, wait a sec. Huh? Something else followed us from the basement. Huh, what? A severed hand. Suzie, bah, you meani. And gotcha. Okay, what do we do, throw it out? Um, let's think about it first. It's a mouse, it could be as cute as a pet. Alright, if it's a severed hand, I'll keep it as my pet. Bah, wait, let me raise it too. Sure, we'll raise it together. It's funny, I was so nervous earlier. I've never actually hung out with you, you know? So far, it just kinda feels like, I don't even know why I was nervous. It just feels like I already know you. Yeah, I, I feel the same, it's pretty cool, I guess. Just strange, it feels like, feels like I, you're the s- you're the same as you. Hmm, it feels like you're the same as it was my dream. Uh, what was your dream about me like? Huh? Oh, I, uh, um. I mean, uh, I think I have to, to go find my old hamster cage. Hey, wait, I wanna hear about your dream. Don't move a goddamn inch. Okay, I'm gonna move a goddamn inch. Chris, I'm coming, Chris. Chris, I'm. Oh, wait, parcel. Oh, fuck. Just hear that, sound like a guitar. That's probably just Chris, like the other stuff. Oh hell dude, it's gone, the angel fell over, like it could be anywhere. Could be coming from, um, in here, but. Hey, let's go. Hmm, it's quiet, yeah, well, it's probably scared us, probably scared of us. Suzie, touching that isn't just chill out, it's gonna come out, we'll hear it. Yeah, you're right, I don't know if it's, if they ever makes noise. God. So what happened next in your dream? Um, so we were all riding on roller coasters. And you, you, Chris, this boy was there. Chris costume was kind of, I mean, like coaster cool? Um, yeah, it had like flames on it. Yeah. Honestly, the boy was strange, though. Huh, why? He looked a little like Azrael. You know, Chris's brother, but not. Yeah, I mean, he does kinda look like Chris's mom. Huh? From, uh, you said he would. Right, it just makes me wonder why. In the end, I got sort of wrong, I stopped questioning it. Ended up, ended up being in a large city with Chris. What's interesting is that Chris just just acted not like their normal self. They acted just like they do recently, I guess. Not creepy nor recent to me. And everything was, I guess it was almost like a game or something. You can't hurt enemies, finding treasures, stuff like that. Never thought of that way. Chris, even though they kept looking at me, like they wanted to say something. Everything that came out of their mouth sounded odd, like it was like on speaker or something. Sound like normal Chris to me, well, it wasn't something, it wasn't something that was weird. I think Chris just, I think Chris is just weird period, yeah, sometimes they mumble, sometimes they yell. Sometimes it's like, dude, I don't know why, but like for some reason they're really, really good at flirting? Huh? What makes you say that, Susan? Um, never mind. Haven't you like seen the flirt with people? With who? Like, uh, enemies? What enemies? Dude, I don't know, I'm just thinking like, damn, I should get flirting lessons from them. Oh, flirting lessons from Chris? That sounds fun. Uh, I mean, you're also a buddy? Am I that bad? Um, Suzie, I don't think Chris would teach me that. Damn, I guess it'll just be three of us then. Who's three? Oh, you know, uh, damn it, you know? Um, so there is this boy that goes to another school. And I want him to come to the festival, but you were thinking of going together? Yeah, but you know, he can't go cuz of like other schools stuff. Huh. I mean, don't get any weird ideas or anything, he just doesn't really get included much, so. What the heck, that's really sweet of you, Suzie. So I noticed like, there's like this photo of you and Chris on the wall. Oh my gosh, that's so old, I forgot about it. I didn't know you were like, um, close, I guess. We, I mean, we, we're just neighbors, so I mean, we just end up seeing each other a lot, that's all. Okay, but like in the photo, you're like, kinda like riding a Ferris wheel together. Bah, yeah, it's like kind of just, you know, forced. So we're in Ferris wheel together, does it mean anything? Uh, maybe not if it's like, just like a forced thing. Oh, I mean, yeah, obviously, I mean, it's just a stupid ride. So theoretically, if it was sunny house, it wouldn't. I mean, maybe it's more about how the two people in the fair, in the wheel fair feel. So maybe if it was forced then, okay, cool, haha. So how did you feel back then? Well, Chris was quiet and staring out the window. And suddenly, out of nowhere, they shook the whole thing. And I screamed and then they turned to me and smiled. So is that good or bad? Um, I don't remember, I was a kid. So, um, anyway, let me ask one more thing, um, about your dream. I'm sure. Was there any part with, uh, I mean, just the two of us and? Well, in my dream, you did have this cute tail. Huh? Uh, okay, well, um, sorry, your dream was stupid and fake with that part. What was wagging behind it? Shut up for a while. Wait a sec. Dude, stop making so much goddamn noise. We're supposed to be searching for clues, dumbass. Hey, uh, sorry about that, I. Suzie, that guitar, you, you're.
Yeah.
Huh, um, should I, uh, put it back? Um, well. No, no, it's, I think you should play it. Me, um, sure, sure, I can give it a shot. Let's, uh, just go somewhere else, though. Um, okay.
Me kill a ghost spell. For a jelly.
Suzie guitar. I'll be right there.
Jackson, if I get this laptop, do you think it would be better than my PC? Jackson.
Chris, nineteen out of twenty. Hey, so you know, me and Chris were in a band, so don't be surprised, I'm pretty good.
Oh, drop the jokes. Let's go!
Oops. Sure, you wanna hear this? Yeah, of course, I. It's always like, listen to someone play. Okay, then check this out. Dude, I actually kind of kicked ass with that one. Uh-huh, can we get an encore? Just for my fans. Bah, haha. Shut up, that was the remix. Man, today's been awesome. Not to be weird or anything. Um, it's, it's not weird at all. I really like hanging out with you too, Suzie. Sweet, maybe we could like, I don't know, hang out again tomorrow or something. Uh, unless you're busy. Um, no, I'm not busy, it's just, tomorrow is, um, uh, it's the festival, Suzie. Oh, yeah, I. Would you, you wanna go together? I. Lights? Oh, yes. Someone had them turned off. Hello, hello, Asgore. Hello, Mr. Dreamer. I mean, you entered up your schoolwork, but. Is that a snack tray? Um, yes, feel free to have some. Don't mind if I do. Phew, lady sure does work up an appetite. Great, I need to bite before your mom, before your mother's home, oh, well, um, there's no rush, you know? She has work, she's not gonna be home for hours. What do you mean? I just saw her outside the window. Um, I'm just, Suzie, I, Suzie, I'm sorry, I think you should. Oh shit. Hello, Carol. Oh my, you. Get your hands off that guitar. Oh shit. Hey, what's your, she's, she didn't know, man, I, I was the one who gave her the guitar, I, I told her to play it, I just I just wanted to hear it again, and she's not a bad person, but my, Noel. Kitchen now. Hey, listen, Noah didn't do anything wrong, it's my fault, I took the guitar in. Leave. What? You are not welcome. You are not welcome, we don't talk to my daughter again. Hey, I can, Suzie, just, just go. I was just taking your daughter to the festival tomorrow, jerk. Um, I'll be in the kitchen.
You? Me?
Ask her, if you're gonna eat the snack tray, do it outside. Yes, Carol?
You? That? Do you really have that type of attitude towards me?
No reason to enter.
Oh, I know, I got it. Jackson, i- if I, if I get it, would that be better than my PC?
You felt something like ice on your shoulder. My apologies, it's now cursed. As you know, you are welcome here at any time.
She looks like it's about to turn daytime, thank you guys.
Well, that was awkward, that was up with her, her mom. Going green, so she stepped in. In the room dropped like five degrees. The coat, Chris, we forgot how, we forgot what the coat, darn, it's all her fault. There, there, don't worry too hard about things, it's just lovely once you get to know her. Um, yeah, I bet. So what are you two up to now? Um, we're probably gonna go back to Chris's house. Ah, I see, that was where the heart is. Now for either of you two a cheese cracker. You know what? Sure. Delicious, aren't they, Chris? Yeah, actually, thanks. Ta-da for now, have a great day, Chris. Hey, hey, Chris, I didn't wanna say it near your dad, but I saw it. Saw the guitar, there was the code for the shelter. Didn't mean to write it down, but darn, we were so close to something, should just gotta try again tomorrow. Well, what the hell do we do now? Great, now it's raining. Geez, your house is closed, let's go. At least we know where one of the code is. Still, we gotta hurry.
You're about to get off? That's some bullshit, don't do that.
Her smile faded, seems to be headed towards the shelter and not near there.
You're such a big head, John.
Huh? Hey, the door is locked. Seriously? Uh, you don't have a key? Damn, well, you're almost doing your choir practice, practice, right? What the fuck did I just get? Yeah, whatever. Guess we can go to the church and bother her for it, ugh. To the church. Says closed, but the lights are on inside. It's finally closed. Well, let's, uh, ask your mom for the key, I guess. Of course she's in line, it's ruining choir practice. You, uh, you'll get her, right? Chris, hey, Chris, I don't think they're having choir practice. That goddamn night, I can wander right where everyone can see. Chris, let's think logically, right? There's no way they can get out of there. But I was seeing them. If we, if we just wait here, we'll be able to catch them leaving, right? Oh, we aren't logical. You're goddamn right, we aren't. Hey, you think you can scare us? I'll show you who really rules the dark, come on, Chris.